Counselor Luzzon, you're on the court, right? Because I... I want to see Teresa. We're putting on... I'm going to get that. You can see that I have it.
Okay. I have...I'm a little distracted right now, but once we...
Sorry.
No, mentally, but once we end this part, I'll double-check. And we have the chief here, right? And Wendy? Yeah, yeah. Is Counselor Luzon outside as well?
Yes. Yeah, she was outside.
You ready? The only copy I have here... Attorney did not come. He was sent the invitation. Good evening and welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, September 10th. It is now 6:28. Voting members present in the chamber. I have to my left the City Council at large on 11. On Zoom, we have the Vice Chair of the Committee, Counselor Selena Reyes. And I believe, yep, and we also have Counselor Gregory Del Rosario. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting of the Public Safety Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the City Council Chamber or use any of our social media platforms. At this point, can you please join me in a moment of silence for the horrific incident that happened in our nation today and also in the pledge? Now join me in the pledge.
I proudly wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individuals who live in peace and justice.
I do want to say before we get started with the agenda, what occurred, the act of violence that occurred in our country today is unacceptable. Doesn't matter your political beliefs, doesn't matter what party you are a part of, violence is never the answer. And I believe it is okay to have different views. It is okay to live freely, but it's not okay to result to violence. And that is all I'm going to say about that. Okay. Counselors, can I have a motion to untable item 232-25 Audit of the Lawrence Police Department for fiscal year 2025?
So move.
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario. Role call, Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yes.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Counselors, last time we tabled this item, Counselor Reyes and Counselor Levy had asked Counselor Luzon to provide a copy of the statement that she presented to us, which she did, and we have it here printed out, and it was also emailed to us for the counselors that are on Zoom. We also requested for the police chief to be here. He is here. The city attorney was requested to be here as well. He is not here. I attempted to call him three times and sent him a text, and I haven't heard back. But we do have, I'm going to bring up Counselor Luzon first before we go to the chief, just to quickly reintroduce this item.
Good evening. Wendy Luzon, 11 Albion Street. Counselor Wendy Luzon, 11 Albion Street, J1. So I think I mentioned at the first meeting, the importance of requesting this audit based on the amount of chiefs that we had at the police department. In less than four years, we had five. And I think it's important to the community to know about the finances and other details about, from the police department. And I believe we are all in agreement. I also mentioned that I had a conversation with Mayor Brian De Peña months, years ago, and he agreed to it. And we also have here Chief Aguilar, so you can ask him if this is important or if this is something that we can postpone. But I think it's important for the community to know what has been happening at the police station for the last four years, based on the amount of chief that we had at the police, the Lawrence Police Department.
Thank you. Counselor Luzon, I'm also going to read the email that you sent for the record.
Oh, thank you.
And I'll provide you a copy, my copy, so that you don't have to write everything. You're welcome. Dear members of the Public Safety Committee, I am writing to formally request that this committee take the necessary steps to initiate an independent audit of the Lawrence Police Department. This request is made not as criticism, but as an opportunity to strengthen accountability, transparency, and trust between the department and the residents we serve. An audit will allow us to ensure financial accountability by reviewing the use of taxpayer dollars over overtime expenditures and grant management. Second, allow us to evaluate operation efficiency to determine whether staffing, patrol deployment, and case management are meeting the needs of our community. Third, verify compliance with state and federal standards on issues such as civil rights protections, use of force policies, and record keeping. Fourth, increase transparency and trust by addressing community concerns and demonstrating that public safety resources are managed responsibly. And lastly, provide a roadmap for improvement to help the department identify areas of strengths and areas that may require additional training, resources, or policy adjustments. Our residents deserve a police department that is effective, efficient, and accountable. An independent audit will give both the council and the public a clear, objective picture of the department's operations and finances while also guiding future improvements that can make Lawrence safer and stronger. I respectfully ask the Committee on Public Safety to take this matter under serious consideration and place it on the agenda for a formal discussion and action. Thank you for your attention and your commitment to safety and well-being of our city. Sincerely, Counselor Wendy Luzon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and to add to that is, yes, if we, as a council, if you send this to the full council as a favorable recommendation, we will have the opportunity to discuss and to hear from other council members. And, but the idea is to make sure the relationship between, also is to make sure that relationship between the police department and the community is based on trust. And to do that, I think, is necessary to order an independent audit so that can the police department, under this new administration, under this new chief, can present what had happened and where they are going. And thank you for reading the letter, the email that I sent. And I wish, I hope that this committee can send this as a favorable recommendation to the full council for review.
Thank you. And I apologize to the counselors that were here during, that were with us last meeting, but we did have one of our members that couldn't make it, and the police chief was not here last meeting. So I thought it was appropriate to read the letter, even though you did read it last minute, to the three counselors that were here, but just wanted to make sure everyone...
No, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for doing that.
Everyone is on the same page.
Thank you.
Before I call up the police chief to get his, and allow questioning from a police standpoint, I do want to allow the opportunity for my colleagues to ask any questions that they may have thought of afterwards or may have thought of right now as I read, as I reheard the counselor's statements before I called up the police chief.
Here.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't present in the last meeting, and I don't know if this was discussed, but a question to Counselor Luzon. Do we know how much this is going to cost? And if we in agreement on sending to the audit, where the money is going to come out to pay for the audit?
Thank you, Counselor Del Rosario. My understanding that the mayor, Mayor De Peña, agreed in a formal conversation, what we had, he agreed to pay for. That was, we went over that question in the first meeting, I think. I believe so.
Counselor... Counselor Chair? Yes.
Do, I still have the floor. Do we have anything in writing from Mayor De Peña that he's going to pay for it? And I'm assuming that this got to go to procurement and do a procurement process to see who's going to do the audit?
We do not have his answer in writing, but I also know that he communicated the same thing to the Chief Aguilar. And I don't know the exact amount that this will cost. I will definitely, we can send an email and request the amount. But I think the amount of money is insignificant, and I know that we have to be careful with how much money we spend, how much taxpayer dollars we spend. But I think the result will make sense, will be worthy, knowing what had happened with the police department for the last four years. And also that will give an opportunity to this administration to tell the community that everything is where it's supposed to be. And if something is not where it's supposed to be, to inform the community their plan to make it better.
And I would like to add, Counselor Del Rosario, our secretary sent an email on September 4th to the city attorney, to our acting CFO, the police chief, and the mayor, requesting, well, notifying them that this committee was requesting their presence for tonight's meeting. And we have our CFO here, we have the chief here. The other two city members are not currently present.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm actually going to ask the acting CFO, roughly, how much would an audit like this cost? Just an estimate. If you have an estimate, if not, that's okay.
Good evening, Counselors. Ramona Sabalos, acting CFO. So I did bring our current auditors that they will be here later on.
Yeah, they will be here, yeah.
And it's hard to tell without knowing the exact scope of work that we desire to have. Is it going to be based on a specific area of the police department? Is it just financial? I mean, I did hear the letter that was written, and I think we need to meet with the auditors and explain to them exactly what is it that we want, the scope of work, what's expected, what's the goal. And then based on that meeting, then they will provide us with a quote. Because it's all based on the hourly rate, how many hours is estimated, based on the work that they're going to do.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm now, before, any other questions or comments? Yes.
One more, one more for the CFO.
Counselor Del Rosario?
So CFO, according to what you say, so we already have determined who is going to do the audit?
No, no, no.
We have...
No. We have our current external auditors that will actually be presenting in our next meeting, Budget and Finance. So I did ask them to just come in case there was specific questions about audits that they can help with. So we do not have an auditor. We just have our current external auditors that do our financial audit every year. So I just, they were kind enough to come and just be here in case there were more questions that they will be more suitable to answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Levy?
Are you done, Counselor Del Rosario?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, one of the reasons why I sent it, or we tabled this, was because we need to know the amount that it's going to cost to have an audit. Because I remember when the school committee, for $10,000, everything was thrown out. That was thrown down, that they cannot come out, the city was not able to come out with $10,000 to make it the audit for the school committee. So probably, we would like to know, you know, how much it's going to cost, because we don't want to spend the time in doing everything. I know that the mayor is, agreed to do this, but we would like to know, you know, for the taxpayer, how much it's going to cost...
Definitely.
...to do this. That is one of the reasons why we as, and also, we would like to know, because at that time, the city attorney was the one that came that said that was, we were not able to have it. Something like this, because the money is thrown. We need to know from where the money is going to come out, how much it's going to cost, and what is the proceeding legally in all of this.
Point well taken, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Levy, for saying that again, because we went over that in the first meeting. But I also think that if we send this to the, if you, you of the committee, send this to the full committee, either it could be sent as a committee report, or a favorable recommendation, whatever the committee chooses to do, it will give an opportunity to all the counselors to express their opinion and, and maybe we can request that information and, you know, in the process. But informing the community about the finances and other issues that I mentioned in the letter of the police department is also our responsibility as counselors. We had had, as I mentioned at the beginning, five different administration, when I say administration, chief, five different chiefs. And putting the house in order also means reviewing their finances and letting the taxpayer know that the money is where it's supposed to be. And if something is not where it's supposed to be, we need to tell them how we're going to fix it. That is also our job as city counselors. I need to propose that, to, and it's going to be up to the council, to the full council, to decide if they agree or not.
Thank you, Counselor Luzon. At this time, I'm going to give you a break.
Thank you.
Bring up the, our police chief. Yes. CFO, sorry, chief. One more question for the CFO. Counselor Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, approximately, how much is the cost for the audit to the city?
I'm sorry.
How much is the cost right now?
For the, our current audit? Yes.
So let's use the financial audit as an example. What is the rate, the hourly rate for...
So we have a three-year contract with our current firm, and it's a $390,000 contract for three years.
$390,000 per year or...
For the three years.
For the three years. So practically, it's 130...
30.
30 something. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now, Chief Aguilar.
Yeah, one last comment. Before we put the chief, one last comment.
Counselor Del Rosario?
Even though I'm fully in agreement, and I just want my colleague to understand that depends on the price of the audit. We've got to do a procurement process, and we've got to go out to bid. If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, if the CFO thinks that I'm mistaken, that's okay. We might have, we might have to go out to bid. And I just wish that if we're in agreement to do this audit, and the company that went this bid, we don't complain about which company is going to do the audit. That's what I hoping for. So just keep that in mind. It depends on the price, we might have to go out in bid, and the city going to choose, and whoever choose it, whoever's going to do the audit might not be the company that we want. And I don't want this to become a fiasco after that, the mayor or whoever picked the company that didn't, didn't suppose to pick. But that's the process. So just, let's go with that, this item with that in mind.
Counsel...
Depends on the price, we've got to go out in bid for it.
Counselor Del Rosario, so we actually, I'm under the impression that we don't have to go out to bid for this, and the CFO just stood up again, and she's going to explain the reason why. CFO?
Yes, so accounting services such as this does not require to go out to bid.
Okay. So it's that's fine, okay. So we will use the company that we have right now.
So, yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
We can, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Counselor Reyes? Is this a financial question?
No, just a comment to you, Madam Chair. I want to, to do the comment to my colleague. We love to say in every, every single item, but through our committee, we have the responsibility to make question, to do the research. It's not mean that we don't want to do the audit or not. It's the intention to know what is the next step to follow the process. I want to be clear in that part, because through the comment, I feel like we don't want to send in the item. We love to send the item, but we want to asking, where are the funding come? Especially, I tried to figure out if we receive some communication from the Mr. Hurdent and also from the mayor office, but I don't see any communication to taking any responsibility with the cost. So I want to do this kind of comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, good evening to all.
Good evening, Chief Aguilar. I would like to know, for the committee's knowledge, what would in your, in your point of view as an officer and as the chief of the department, what would this mean for you and the department? And how could this be either beneficial or not overall?
Certainly. Madam Chair, I, first and foremost, I welcome the opportunity to honor the mayor's wishes and the council's wishes to conduct an audit of the police department. I think that an audit of the police department is not only appropriate, where we've had so much transition regarding the leadership of Lawrence Police Department in such a short time span, but I think it's consistent with best practices. By and large, when new chiefs come in, they'll conduct an audit. I'll give you an example. I'm also requesting an audit. We wouldn't be, we'd be paying for this one, but the audit of my evidence room. And so those are good for several reasons. I think that, you know, you have already spoken to the points about accountability and transparency in order to ensure that the department's financial practices are transparent and accountable. I want to be completely accountable and completely transparent with you, with the community. I think that we deserve it, but not only that, it's the best practice. I think that an audit would help us identify inefficiencies as to how we have been operating. The information that we glean from an audit can help the department streamline operations and make better use of our resources. We can establish how our resources have been used and whether or not those have been the most beneficial and effective use of our time, money, resources, what have you, you know, in order to serve the community. I think the financial responsibility accountable will establish trust with the community, council, the mayor's office, everyone. And it's going to, like I said, provide insights to us into best management practices and highlight our strengths. And it's also going to expose what our needs for improvement are going forward. I think that the audit will help us develop strategic plans that are going to align with community needs and the community's priorities. It'll help us make better decisions as to future resource allocation decisions. And it's going to identify, you know, training needs for our staff, for myself as well, regarding budgeting and financial management, how it's been done, and how we can do it better moving forward. So I think it's, it's something that is sound in order to reset what we're doing, to find out exactly which way we're going to go with this, and establish a practice that's going to survive, you know, changes of leadership and the like. So there are a lot of benefits to that. And I think that when you compare, and I certainly understand that there has to be an understanding of the overall cost of that. I don't know what that cost is going to be, or who's going to allocate, you know, how that's going to be paid for. But I can tell you that it would be beneficial for us to start afresh, to start anew, and cost-benefit analysis of that, it's more beneficial to all of us and get a better understanding of our finances than it is, you know, not.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Counsel... Counselor Levy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Madam Chair. Um, do you know when was the last audit, if any, of the Lawrence Police Department?
I do not, Madam Counselor, I do not. It has been quite some time.
To the capo, can you answer, no? So practically, practically, we have never, ever had an audit to the police department, to the Lawrence Police Department?
I'm not aware of any contemporary or, uh, audits that have been conducted within Lawrence Police Department, um, and not during my time either as the executive officer under Chief Roy Vask, and I know he was in office approximately five years or so, um, nor under Chief Fitzpatrick. I mean, uh, we could well be looking into almost a decade, if I've, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so this is, I, I believe the best next steps is to table this item again. Capo, I'm going to, I guess, give you the responsible, the task of setting a meeting or communicating with the mayor, the, the city attorney, and Counselor Luzon, getting everyone at the table, and looking at what exactly is feasible. If this audit should go through, should it be done in parts? Does that feasible, does that fiscally make more sense? Or is, is, is there, do we have the funds in some, somewhere within our budget that we can conduct a full audit on the police department? No, no, they're doing, they're separate, they're doing a separate audit, yeah, they're doing a separate audit, but this in particular. Counselor De Rosario.
Uh, thank you for your chat, we also need to be specific of what type of audit are we gonna do? Is it a financial audit, is it a full audit? Because we talking about audit, but nobody has specified what type of audit, um, according to, you know, the chief wants to have the house in order, um, and we haven't done an audit for the police department, and, and who knows when was the last time they did an audit? So we gotta be a specific in that, when we got a specific of what we looking for in the audit, that's when we're gonna get the regular price, or, or the accurate price it, it, it costs, the, the audit will cost, thank you.
Thank you, and actually, the letter, capo, there's some examples here, so we have listed overtime expenditures, grant management, staffing, patrol deployment, case management, uh, compliance within state federal, on state federal issues such as civil rights protections, use of force policies, record keeping, so I think that's a great foundational start to determine what areas we, we, we can, um, audit if we move forward with this item. Or if we can just do a whole generic, um, audit with a little bit of everything. But that is something I'm gonna task you with, get everybody at the. Yes, 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 I'll, actually, can you give this to the capo, please? She can have my copy, I have the email. Thank you. All right, Counselor Luzon, I, I think you stepped out, yeah, you did step, step out when I was speaking this. What we're going to do is, I'm going to have the committee table this item, the capo will be reaching out to you, the city attorney, and Mayor De Penya to schedule a sit-down.
Okay.
So we can all get the first part done, and it's to determine whether we should do this by parts, and if we do it by parts, which areas within the police department will be audited, or if, if we do have the funds to conduct, uh, a general, overall audit on the, on the, on the police department. I'm sorry, can you include the chief, I don't know if the chief has to be in that too, but.
I think he should.
Capo, he doesn't include the chief.
Or any other counselor that would like to be part of the conversation, um, we are open.
I can be part of them, thank you, Counselor Levy.
I just know, I would rather, yeah, yeah, that's fine. I would rather get this done now, the committee level, if we were to send this item up, I, I, I can already predict Counselor LaPlante, perhaps Counselor President, or asking about, specifically about funds.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure we have those answers before we send it up.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, committee.
Can I have a motion to table item 232 dash 25?
Motion to table?
A motion has, has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor De Rosario, uh, roll call, Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
And the chair votes in the affirmative. Chief, now that I have you here, there was a communication sent on, uh, August 20th, it was pertaining to this item, and I, it, it worked out because you, you couldn't attend that meeting, but, it's here highlighted that there, we have a tabled item, the Lawrence Trust Act, that the council president is requesting an, an update that's, we're supposed to be updated on it every six months. Obviously, the committee has not met, um, recently, until now, so, I am going to request for you to come prepared, I am going to schedule another, uh, public safety meeting during the next full council meeting, and I'm going to ask you to be prepared to come back and give an update on the Lawrence Trust Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and so, uh, specifically to speak on what particular issue regarding the Trust Act?
So, that's an excellent question. I'm gonna find out.
Yeah.
But, I'm assuming it's an overall update, but if there's any specific items, um, areas, I will, I will let you know.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counselors, at this point, we have no other items to discuss, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion has been made, is there?
Again.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Reyes. Um, roll call, Counselor Levy?
Yes.
Counselor Reyes?
Yes.
Counselor De Rosario?
Yes.
And the chair votes in the affirmative, thank you so much, we will see you in two weeks.
Bye-bye.
Yes.
Yes, now. Say, say whatever.
We would just test, you know, the test run to see if you guys were actually.
The CFO, the CFO, the CFO will help out with that, alright. Good evening and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, September tenth. It is now seven oh eight P M. Voting members currently present, I have to my left, the Vice Chair of the Committee Counselor Vivian Marmo, and to my right Counselor Wendy Luzon. Pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may either attend here in the city, at the City Council chambers, or use any of our social media platforms. At this point, I know some of you have already done this, but please join me in a moment of silence for the tragedy that occurred in our country today. And now join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, I know some of you have already heard this, but I'm just gonna repeat it for this committee session. Violence should never be the answer for differences in opinion or differences in political views. No family should go through what occurred in our country today. Thank you. Now, councilors, we're going to get into, we're gonna go right through the agenda. We have minutes to approve from our meeting of August twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made by Council Marmo, there are second.
Second.
Seconded by Council Luzon, discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Councilors, can I have a motion to untable item? Where is it? It's been awhile. Okay, to untable item one sixty-nine dash twenty-five, submission of the annual audit report to the City Council. This includes fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four financial statements and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four reports on federal award programs.
Motion to untable.
Motion has been made by Council Marmo, there are second. Seconded by Council Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. We have our acting CFO here with us, and we have our auditors. Thank you for your patience. I, I'm gonna take the fault for this, this, this one slipped through the cracks a little bit. We had the budget and the audit at the same time, and at that time was just a little hectic, so I apologize for that. But we're here now. CFO, can you introduce the, what we have in front of us, and then we'll just keep moving, keep rolling.
Good evening, Councilors, Ramona Svalos, Acting CFO. You are probably familiar with Powers and Sullivan, that is the, the last company that presented to us. Powers and Sullivan was acquired by Markham L L P, and then Markham L L P was acquired by now C Biz. That's the new audit firm that we have. Tonight, we have our Managing Director Craig Peacock and our Director Jessica Green, and they will review the financial statements and any questions you guys may have.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having us and for your time tonight. My name's Craig Peacock, I'm the Managing Director on the audit. And as your CFO mentioned, many of you are probably used to seeing Jim Powers over the years. And he has since luckily retired, or, or he's lucky to have retired, let's say it that way. And then mention, you know, Jessica Green is our Director on the audit, and Mike Pelleridi is our Supervisor on the audit. We've gone, it's, it's been a whirlwind year, as, as you mentioned that you all were a little bit busy as well. We, we were as well, so realistically, with all due respect, the timing kinda worked out well for us also. We merged and became Markham back in February of twenty-four. And by November first of twenty-four, we had now merged in and become C Biz, which we are now. So it's been a sort of a whirlwind year for us as well, of learning a lot of new processes and ways of doing things and that type of thing. What I would like to say is, for the City of Lawrence in particular, a large city, a lot going on. With the new firm, we have a lot of various divisions, a lot of different types of, of procedures and, and policies that, you know, we can work with the city for any different reviews you were just speaking of. From soup to nuts, from large to small, we, we have a lot of resources now, as, we're a large firm now. We've gone from thirty members to about twelve thousand, so it's, it's changed quite a bit. And so we like to think that that's a real plus for our client base, because it's sort of a one-stop shop at this point. So we're, we're excited for that. The, the audit schedule this year was, was very similar as years passed. Typically, the audit team would get started in, you know, the June-July timeframe, looking at maybe some of the, the federal grants that need to be audited for the, for the city's single audit, which, which encompasses, we'll, we'll get to and talk about, but that just encompasses all the federal dollars that the city has expended in the, you know, in the particular fiscal year under audit. Year-end has typically been in the September-October timeframe, and then, you know, work to kinda close it down from there. As I said, with the double mergers, we were also implementing a lot of new procedures and learning some new ways of doing things, so it was a little bit slower for us this year. However, I like to think that our learning curve is, is really planning off now. We've learned a lot, and I think it also elevated the, the audit skills, if you will, of, of all of our teams, because now we've merged with a number of other firms together, and we all get to share best practices and, and that type of thing. During prelim, I mentioned, you know, we look at, at the single audit. There are things like, we'll do some work with the retirement system, planning, kinda, kinda getting ourselves keyed up and ready for, once the city closes their books and we're ready to jump in and start the audit, at that point where, you know, looking at, has cash been reconciled, has receivables, all, all of the balance sheet items of, of the city. What I'm gonna do now is just give some required communications that we're supposed to, you know, let everybody know type of thing, as, as auditors, where our main goal in the audit is to be able to opine on the city's financial statements and the single audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance, of which, that's what we're here to discuss. And the audit is generally performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. So we don't have, that's not our decision, that's, that's GASB and GAAP, it's how, you know, how the audits are determined and, and performed. Management has a big role, because really, these are management's reports, management's financial statements. So not only is management being looked at, are policies and procedures in place, is cash reconciled timely? Are, are the, the books and records clean? Are departments reconciling with, you know, the, the main general ledger and/or your treasury, that type of thing? Is that all occurring? We'll get to it, but I'm happy to say that we did not note any major discrepancies whatsoever going through the audit, which was great. Our responsibilities as far as the audit goes, again, I mentioned to express an opinion on the financials and the Uniform Guidance, but in order to do so, we first need to obtain an, an understanding of the internal control structure of the city, policies and procedures in place that allow us to plan the audit and determine the extent of procedures that need to be done in order for us to support that opinion on, on the reports. We also have to bring to yourselves those charges with governance, whether there are any what we would call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, of which I'm happy to say there are none noted in the fiscal twenty-four audit. And also, we did not encounter any difficulties in working with management of any department in order to obtain the information that we need to review and look at to be able to substantiate the general ledger and the balances for the city and/or opine on the financials. And remaining independent is extremely important for an audit firm. We cannot have, for instance, you know, my brother can't sit on the, the council, or something of that nature, where there has to be complete independence, in fact, and appearance, of which we have to go through a number of checklists to confirm that, and I'm happy to say that we were able and we are completely independent of the city. And we also look to see, has the city changed or adopted any new accounting policies or procedures in the current fiscal year, and this time we're speaking of fiscal twenty-four? We didn't notice any changes in existing policies, however, GASB one hundred, its error corrections and changes in accounting was implemented during fiscal twenty-four. And really, all that did was, not, not to drill too much into the weeds, I'm gonna try to stay high level, but then I'll answer any questions that might come up. But just a real quick example is, when you look at your financials, you always have your general fund, and then there's different columns that, that come up, those are referred to as major funds. And sometimes, depending on the criteria, a major fund will change. And GASB one hundred this year was implemented, which gave us a new sort of format that we had to, the way it had to be reported within the financials. It honestly, probably doesn't really mean a whole lot to you all, it doesn't change bottom lines, it doesn't change the numbers, it maybe just puts some money from your left pocket to your right pocket, within the financial statements. Again, not departments, not what the monies are there for, or anything, it's just strictly accounting for your financial statements. Overall results of the audit is the city received an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, which is the best that you can get, that is what you would want. No, no qualifications at all. We were able to meet the reporting deadline with the Federal Audit Clearinghouse in relation to the city's single audit, again, that's the report on the expenditure of federal dollars that was due by March thirty-first, of which it was filed on time. I'm happy to say that, working with all the different departments this year, the information that we received was both accurate and timely. And I, I sometimes like to say, as an example, I've gone into clients before and, you know, asked a question. Let's just use Treasury an example, can you get me this bank reconciliation? And in a perfect world, these reconciliations are occurring every month. And if the particular treasurer takes three or four days to answer mine, our team's question, well, our professional skepticism antenna go up and they say, are these, or we would say, are these reconciliations really occurring timely? Because I think someone's at home for the next three nights trying to pull it all together for us. But I'm happy to say that answers that we, we needed, information to support the balances was provided timely, and it was accurately supported. Any questions we did have were addressed real time, and we were able to, to obtain the necessary supporting documentation that we needed to opine on the city's financials. So that's, that's all good stuff. I mentioned that there are no material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. So for, in fiscal twenty-four, now that we've merged into C Biz, as Powers and Sullivan, you're always gonna have your financial statements and the, the scheduled expenditures of federal awards. We used to always put a written management letter. And sometimes, the management letter would be what I would refer to as maybe some housekeeping issues, issues that are not required under auditing standards to be put in writing. They can be discussed with the finance team and that type of thing. The only items that are required to be put in writing are material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. So the new firm's policies are that we typically do not issue a written management letter unless we have some of those major material weakness or significant deficiencies, again, of which we had none. So for twenty-four, we've issued the city's report on financial statements and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, both of which received an unmodified opinion, again, which is what the city would want. Some highlights this year, and the general fund obviously is the, the main fund of the city. The, the general fund's budget had a deficit of about thirty-eight million dollars this year. However, about forty-eight million dollars of available funds, free cash, was used to balance the budget. But because of strong collections and your department's ability to control their costs and have some turnbacks after encumbrances and such moving into fiscal twenty-five, you only realistically needed to go into your coffers for about thirty-eight million. Another ten million was able to be saved because of strong collections and/or the ability to control those costs. So that's a positive. General fund unassigned fund balance, unassigned fund balance is essentially a measure of dollars within the general fund that the city can spend and appropriate. There are some other categories that might refer, that might relate to, excuse me, encumbrances and articles that are being carried forward, so they're already sort of earmarked for something, as well as the city has the Fiscal Stability Fund that's, you know, been carrying for a bit. So those funds are sort of earmarked for now, until either they're turned back or what. But so the unassigned fund balance really is a measure of what the city has available to appropriate at any particular time. And this year, it totals about sixty-two point nine million, which is down by about one point three from the prior year. And again, a lot of that has to do with the movement of the different buckets, as I mentioned, as encumbrances and that type of thing, as well as the fact that we utilized about thirty-eight million dollars worth of available funds to balance the budget. So that, that, that's the general fund budget, so it directly impacts the general fund. In unassigned fund balance, it's also important to note that there is something that we refer to as GASB fifty-four that kinda dictates where and how different balances and buckets of funds get reported. The city's stabilization funds, of which there is a legal service, a compensated absence, workers' comp, and injured-in-the-line-of-duty stabilization funds. Those are reported as unassigned as part of that sixty-two point nine million. So if we were to add those various funds up, I'm gonna ballpark it at a million four, so that would, you know, leave you about sixty-one and a half million dollars of unassigned fund balance within the general fund that can be utilized, of which that represents about fourteen point one percent of your general fund expenditures, down a little from twenty-three, where it represented fifteen point six. But again, each year, budgets usually don't go down, so expenditures rise, so hence conversely, the, the percentage thereof decreases a bit year after year. But really, those are, those are pretty healthy numbers from what we see. The city has three main enterprise funds, of which water and sewer experienced an increase of four point one million dollars this year. We saw a pretty large increase in charges for services, the usage of water, and hence the sewer related to that. And also, we saw that the water and sewer fund had, they controlled, they were able to control their costs. They did not spend the entire budget. They utilized funds in, you know, obviously, all the important areas, salaries and repairs, and, you know, everything that was needed, but it did not, they did not expend every dollar that was appropriated. So from having a little bit of what we'll call turnbacks there and great collections on the, the usage of water and that type of thing, you essentially went up about four point, one million dollars in net position in your, in water and sewer. Airport fund increased about five point one million dollars, and that's basically because the city received a grant of about five point eight million towards a runway project at the airport, of which it had only gotten started, so only some was spent. So currently, you know, next year, depending on the timing of the program, if all of that is spent down, you may see a little bit of a decrease or a break even, depending on the actual operating budget. And lastly is parking. Parking, enterprise fund went down about a million five this year, and that was mostly due to the net OPEB liability and the net pension liability accruals increasing in the parking fund. So that's what, that's, that's essentially what caused the decrease in, in that fund there. Some significant balance sheet items that we always look at, and I, I don't wanna bore you all with all the numbers, but two of the big elephants in the room typically over the years are the net OPEB liability and the net pension liability. This year, as of June thirty twenty-four, the city has a net OPEB liability of three hundred and fifteen million dollars, which is down thirty-four million dollars from fiscal twenty-three. Some of the major attributes that went into that are valuations for OPEB are done every two years. So when this particular valuation was done, the, the, excuse me, the interest rates were up a little bit, and what the actuaries have to do is look to see what type of assets do we have in our OPEB trust fund, of which this year, the city contributed another million dollars to that fund, brings the total to about two point six million, which is a wonderful start. We have, clearly, we have some clients that have more, but we have a whole lot of clients that have less. So that's a great start, but because the total liability is three hundred and fifteen million, I think it's fair to say that two point six currently will not cover those expenditures, you know, for years to come, as, as all your retirees and your current employees retire and that type of thing. And OPEB is a rolling number based on current employees earning the benefit and retirees receiving those benefits that they earned. But the actuary was able to, you know, the twenty-year bond rate went up a bit to about four point two one percent, so they were able to utilize that, which was able to make a big, a big change in the liability. Again, so that went down thirty-four million. The next one we mentioned was the net pension liability. The city's retirement system is reported as a fiduciary component unit within the city's financial statements. That's very consistent, one from year to year, as well as all other communities that have their own retirement system within the state of Massachusetts. And that liability this year was one hundred and nine. And um that liability this year was 190.7 million dollars, which was an increase of about 823,000 dollars from the previous year. Uh, however, um when you look year to year, your net pension liability is trending downward. And what happens is a big, big factor in the the, what we're calling the net pension liability is the the asset base of your retirement system. And, you know, some years they have great investment uh performance, other years not so good. And if I may make one clarification, your finance, the city's financial statements are reported as of June 30 to the, uh, this year of 24, the retirement system is a calendar year. So they're in these financials as of 12/31/23. So we, for a retirement system, we always have to look at the investment performance within that calendar period as opposed to a fiscal year. And for last year's financial statements, calendar 22 was not the greatest investment year for for anybody, retirement systems in this case. However, for calendar 23, they really had a great year. Uh, your pension system made, if I remember correctly, about 34 million dollars worth of investment income, uh which really helped to offset the increase, uh because the net pension liability continually is going to go up pretty much each year as the actuary um uh produces those figures, again, depending on the assumptions, the interest rate, what's going on in the markets. But quite frankly, with a base of employees, new and old, I I don't, I don't mean by age, I mean current and former, uh might be better, better language. The net pension liability, you know, you're going to be, there's benefits to be paid for years to come. So that that liability is continually moving off and upwards, but it is the base of assets from the retirement system that helps quite a bit. Uh, so again, this was a great year for investment income and currently this the system, the city's system is is 61.4% funded, uh which, again, that's better than many of our clients. Yes, I think we can all come up with a few uh communities within the state of Massachusetts that may be funded a little bit more. Uh, they're probably in and around the city of Boston, that type of thing, some of the the more affluent communities, but other than that, at 61%, I think you guys are doing great realistically. Um, long-term debt, another large liability within your financial statements. Uh, there's about, we'll call it about 250 million dollars worth of long-term debt in there now, which is broken out between the governmental funds and your various uh business type funds, but however, just the water and sewer uh business type enterprise fund has some debt. Uh, the governmental funds, and again, just as a a quick note, the city will bond and go out for debt issuances for various, to help fund various capital projects. Uh, on the governmental side, there's about 174 million dollars outstanding at June 30th. And on the uh water and sewer business type side, there's about 75 million dollars. And those include capitalized premiums uh that that are sometimes received through the debt issuance that are then used to pay down uh either some of the project or interest costs related to the debt uh as we move forward.
On page, on page, can we see the um the long-term debt?
You can see that on, excuse me, I just didn't note it here. Oh, what was it? 52, thank you. I have it right here, but just was quicker than I. So on page 52, you'll see that on 52 itself, it relates to governmental funds and it comes down to approximately 167 million worth of actual long-term bonds and another 6.8 million of unamortized premium for the total of 174 million dollars there. And if you flip to page 53, you'll see the water and sewer enterprise fund, uh of which uh they have between the um Mass Clean Water Trust, as well as some general obligation bonds, uh 75.8, we'll call it 76 million dollars worth of long-term debt outstanding as of June 30th, uh currently. Um, also another on the asset side, one of the largest assets um that go on to the balance sheets and such are the capital assets of the city. It includes your buildings, your, you know, schools, vehicles, machinery and equipment, all the DPW equipment, that type of stuff. We saw approximately 93 million dollars worth of new additions this year, of which a large portion of that related to some new school building projects, uh renovations and such of other city buildings, machinery and equipment purchases, as well as some water and sewer infrastructure projects is what made up most of, most of those dollars that were capitalized. Um, that's the two, so we can move on to the report on federal award programs. That was sort of the high level of the financials. I can either go through the report on federal awards now, or if anybody had any specific questions on the financials, I'd be more than happy to address those.
Let's, let's entertain questions on the financial reports, financial statements first. Counselors, do you have any comments or questions pertaining to the financial statements in front of us? I'm looking at the council president because he always has a question. No, you're good? Really?
Madam, yes, I do have a question. So you mentioned free cash.
Yes.
Isn't the decrease of free cash a signal of a financial problem? Because based, based, we are the cities, we had spent more than 60% of free cash. Uh, is that a, something that we should be worried?
Well, uh, let me answer that in in a couple of ways. Just by itself, I would suggest that free cash is there to be used. Um, uh, however, when the city works with their rating agencies and you're getting ready to issue maybe some general obligation bonds or have your free cash certified, Moody's, S&amp;P, they all know that any community that we're speaking of, and in this case, the city of Lawrence, you're going to have to go into your pockets at some time and utilize some of that free cash for projects, maybe one-time expenditures, to assist in balancing the budget, that type of thing. What they're really looking for, because we all know, excuse me, we all know even personally, uh, we hope to be able to establish an emergency fund should my furnace break or something of that nature. I know I'm going to have to utilize those funds. What the rating agencies are look, are really looking for is, does management have a plan to replenish those funds? They expect that they will be used at some point in time, but they want to know when you sit down and and talk each year or uh and they're looking to reaffirm your bond rating, um, uh, review your balance sheet and come up with your free cash and that type of thing, they want to understand, does management have a plan? And not just related to free cash, but are you, as a city, budgeting properly, paying attention to what's going on within the city, utilizing funds when needed, not always using free cash for ongoing expenditures, uh hiring 40 new teachers or 40 new, you know, I'm just kind of making up examples here, something that would be unsustainable when that free cash is gone and now the city has to look for ways to to fund the budget essentially. So oftentimes they'll look at free cash usage um a little more favorably for maybe a capital project, uh and or some what we'll call more one-time expenditure type um programs. Um, they may look at it a little bit more unfavorably if it's being used to try to sustain and or increase your budget for things that really there's not going to be any funding there for in the future. But again, should, what your financial advisor and those that are meeting with you to discuss the finances of the city are really looking for is, how are we budgeting? How are we, what are our expectations? How is our budget look? Are our revenues currently enough to support our expenditure levels? Um, so that we know between turnbacks and so on and so forth, the free cash will be continually replenished each year. That's, they just want to see that you're able, as a city, to properly work as a finance team and that management can have a, a, a policies and procedures in place and ideas on how to utilize the free cash, but how to also replenish it later on. They, they don't want to see you get to zero and have the inability to, to replenish.
I always get the microphone that is on. Um, now it's time. So based on what you just uh shared, can, can you, for the people that are watching, how many millions we spend in free cash this year, based on your?
Um, I apologize. Might I say that back just to make sure I understood the question?
Can you share how many millions we, the city has spent this year?
Uh, about 38 million was spent this year.
So compare, if we compare that to other cities, we spend more free cash than any other city in Massachusetts?
I don't know that I would say that. Um, there are communities that are, are not very high up on the bond rating and such because they don't have a plan to replenish and they're utilizing their free cash for anything and everything related to the budget. Um, so it's, you know, it's, it's hard to simply give an answer comparing the city of Lawrence to any and or all communities within the state of Massachusetts, only because everything is, is so different. But um, I wouldn't suggest that, that yes, 38 is a large number. I, I, I won't take that away from you.
I'm going to read something and you uh uh correct me if I'm wrong and if you don't have the answer, please uh let us know, but I'm going to read this. So for fiscal year 2024, Lawrence experienced a major decline in his certified free cash, dropping 20.5 million, which is uh 63.6% compared to the previous year. And this was the largest decrease amount in a Massachusetts uh community, in Massachusetts community. So uh, you may not have the answer for that because you were working on the city of Lawrence, but uh if the CAFL can give us an answer via email, and I'm, I mentioned this, because I don't think you have the answer, CAFL, no, because you work for the city of Lawrence. You have the answer? Okay, I, I think she has the answer.
Good evening again. Um, as you recall, we had 57 million dollars from ARPA, um, that was allocated to free cash in two years. Um, those numbers significantly increased the amount of free cash that we had. Um, our free cash averages about 15, 16 million dollars per year. During those two years, our free cash was astronomically bigger or higher, I should say, than any other year we've had because of the um, the ARPA money that went through free cash. And to talk about that 38 million dollars that um our auditor mentioned, um, 20 million dollars of that was transferred to the debt service to cover for the two schools and the new police station because we did not um have an override. So the 20 million dollars from free cash was transferred to a stabilization reserve, a debt service to cover, so we can pay for the debt service. And um, as you recall, I brought that up when we were talking about the, the budget this year. Um, also another 10 million dollars was transferred from free cash for a reserve, stabilization reserve for the city, uh which is, again, something that the rating agencies look at to make sure that we do have a reserve. So the 38 million dollars wasn't money that was spent on anything extraordinary, it was just money that was allocated for reserves. One, the 20 million dollars for debt service, another 10 million dollars for the stabilization reserve, and then there were other projects that the council approved from free cash, one of them being 5 million dollars for um site improvements because we don't have a um, a formal CIP because of all the debt that we have. So uh, some of the expenses for um either road services, I mean, road repair, sidewalks and so forth, for about 5 million dollars was also transferred. So that is the um, the total of the 38 million dollars. Um, so that decrease that you see from year to year is because um all that money from ARPA went to free cash, which is about 42 million dollars that, uh, that went. And then the following year went down to 15 or about 16 million dollars, which is more in line what will we actually have on a, on a yearly basis.
Uh, can we agree, and thank you for explaining that, but can, can we agree that we are spending more free cash than any other city in Massachusetts? It looks like, based on what you said.
Right, but we didn't really spend that money. We just transferred to our reserve account to cover um the debt services. It's a lot of money that we have to pay for the two new schools and the police station. So to make sure that the city doesn't suffer and has to come up with that money in the regular operating budget, we put money aside to cover those extraordinary expenses. We didn't have an override, we didn't have a, um, uh, uh, like a excess taxes being charged, uh, so we are using our savings account to cover for those expenses.
And that is my concern, CAFL, that, uh, and thank you for explaining that, but I just wanted to, uh, thank you for the explanation, but I wanted, for the people that are watching this meeting, that we are spending or not, we don't have, let me rephrase, we don't have the same amount of free cash that we had, uh, let's say, last year. So that is a concern that I have.
But again, those two years were very, it's like one in a lifetime opportunity that the city of Lawrence had. We were able and amongst most communities, um, a lot of people did not get as much ARPA money and it had to do with the revenue recognition that we had during the explosion. So that was something that was a fortunate and a blessing for the city of Lawrence to get all that money. And thankfully so, because we can use that money to cover for the extra expenses related to the debt service, again, for the two new schools and the police station. Other, other than that, I mean, we wouldn't be able to afford that. We would have had to do an override or uh use some of the excess levy capacity to cover that because as you see, we have to pay an additional about 4 million dollars a year on debt service to cover for the, the two schools and the police station. I, I understand what you're saying, but.
I, I know, we, we had an agreement at some point and I appreciate your explanation. Uh, but it, it, it sounds like if we are, we know that we're not sustainable. We, we know that as a city, we are not sustainable, but I mean, uh, we should be more careful with uh the free cash, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we should be more careful with free cash.
So that's a great point. I also think that that was a great answer. And if I could add one thing, could I add one thing to that answer? In utilizing the OPERA funds that the city had received, there, that was, you know, all the various COVID, different type of grants that had come out since the COVID pandemic, OPERA funds essentially, or all of the COVID grants had sort of a life. They, they, they had to be spent down by a certain period in time. Uh, so as we just heard, your last few years was sort of a, a very fruitful time for the city because you received a, a large amount of OPERA funding. However, that, those dollars, anything that was left, had to be committed to a project by December of 24 and all of it has to be spent by December 26. So regardless of, of what projects or, or, or the ability to supplement the general fund budget for a while or, because there was a, a lot of areas that those funds were eligible to be used for, they, they would have to have been expended within the next couple of years.
Thank you for your answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm going to take a pause before we get into the next report.
Okay.
I want to get our city employees home real quick. I'm looking at the the items. They should be fairly quickly. So let me, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this item again, item 169-25.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, dear, a second.
Second.
Second, the Council of Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. All right, so let's go. Thank you. Just give me, give me like five minutes to get through.
Would you like me to to sit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right, under, we're going under new business. We have item 361-25, authorization to expend 122,938 with 71 cents from the Office of Planning and Development Grant Funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for winter protocols and temporary placements of fire victim. And it was brought, fire victims. And it was brought to us by Alicia Miller, our Mayor Health Task Force Office and Planning Development Representative.
Good evening, Councilors. Alicia Miller, Coordinator, Mayor's Health Task Force. So the city of Lawrence is one of the the communities, the large, so under the, let me back up, under the the Department of Public Health, there is in the Office of of Local and Regional Health, the Massachusetts' largest communities' health coalition. And the city of Lawrence is one such member of that coalition. There were some discretionary funds that were dispersed to those communities for homeless, homelessness-related or housing-related costs. That's, housing is one of those things that that is common throughout all the communities in that health coalition. And so that's one thing they're focusing on this year. So that money was 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 allocated to the city of Lawrence and will be used by the Office of Planning and Development for the winter protocol and to stabilize a few families of that are victims of fire in the community for this year, this fiscal year.
Alicia, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the planning for for the cold months and temporary placements, you know, anything in emergencies that happen during the cold months, do we have a better, I guess, plan or system in place for the upcoming months? Because sometimes I feel like we know an extreme cold weather is coming and it takes the city the same day to come up with a plan or to even give us information on what the city is going to do during that night or, you know, that week or whatever. Is there a better strategy this time around?
So hopefully with this funding, yes, there is. We've, because of funding issues, we've, sometimes we find it difficult to to get the protocol started when it gets cold. And and we we have had to look at what what's in place and come up with something that's that's reasonable and that we can fund. This funding allows for us to be able to start that process, hopefully a little bit earlier. And and I wish I could say more about it. It's not, it's not under my jurisdiction, but I will give you what I do know. The winter protocol is the city's way to really support the unhoused, especially during during the cold months. And so that's what we're looking to partner with Lazarus House to do and and to be able to bring additional support to those folks who need to be housed during those particularly cold or wet nights and days.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments? Council President.
Alicia, thank you again for for being here in front of the council.
Welcome.
I have a few questions concerned and probably a different approach when it comes to any type of funds related to the fire victims and the winter protocols. So essentially, what I'm seeing here is that this is 122,000, not that much money to be able to house many people when it comes to potentially an emergency. We just have a fire on Lowell Street that, I believe, over 30 people were displaced a little bit more. Just don't have the exact number. But I was wondering to see if the city take another set of approach when it comes to any type of fund related to fire victims.
Again, not my jurisdiction. I am just the person who sits who sits on the the committee for this, for these funds.
That's good, though.
And so that would be a question that I would have to get back to you on.
Yeah.
Because it's not my purview.
No, and and actually, this is, this is good. Why? Because you're not bringing information that is from year to year to year to year. So maybe new ideas might come up out of this. And what I mean is, is like essentially, we keep on promoting self-insure and and also renters insurance. And we keep on telling people, oh, it's just 100 something thou, it's 100, 100 and something dollars. It's just 100 something dollars. It's just 100 something dollars. It may be less than 150. It may be less than 150. It 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 could be less than that. It could be less than 200 for sure. So I was wondering to see if somehow we develop a, through an organization, some type of, obviously with the city, I don't think we may be able to do it, like based on opinions that we have from the past, maybe through Lazarus House or other organizations that might be work with this, with this type of victims, that if we can provide some type of grant for victims that are going through the situation of of fire victims and subsequently be able to promote the the renters insurance through a grant. And 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 one year of renters insurance could be less than a night on a hotel. And if we if we think of this, on this way, potentially, if it's the same victim might go through the same situation in years to come, they're going to have at least a policy that the city pays for for a year and then subsequently be able to work with that, with the new renter or the landlord to be able to have them, you know, somehow require those to be able to get some type of, some type of insurance for the renters or renters insurance. So just just having this 122,000, can we allocate some money to work with an organization to be able to provide information related to renters insurance, plus to the victims potentially have some type of fund for them to buy on their own the renters insurance itself? So this, that's something that we can look into it to see if we can, out of this 122,000, potentially get a 10% of it and then be able to start a new pilot program on that on this.
I, I, to be able to reallocate line items, they would have, the Director Pimentel would have to have a conversation with DPH about that because there was a budget piece that went with with the application. However, because I'm taking notes, I'm looking down, but I'm listening because I'm I'm writing. But there's a part of it that speaks to community outreach workers and and their their responsibility to help or to support wraparound services. And certainly, that's a place where what you're suggesting could be wrapped into what they do. We could make that part of the protocol. Again, I can't, I can't say that we're going to do that. It's something I will suggest to Director Pimentel so that it's it's considered for for the staff moving forward. But yes, it's something that we've been talking about and really thinking about because as the fires happen and as people get displaced and we know the cost of housing, we know that that's something that we have to make sure that our renters are are aware of, that they know how to access it. We did do a little bit last year in October around renters insurance, but it's something that has to be ongoing, not once a year. So definitely something that we're talking about behind doors to see what's the best approach, the most impactful approach, because we know we have around a 70% renter occupancy in the city. So that it's not lost on us that that's something that needs to be, that needs to be supported in some way or form.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm bringing this up exactly because of that, over 70% of the people are renters in Lawrence. So we promote, we promote programs for homeowner occupied, but we never promote a program that it might help during an emergency. And then we have those emergency every, very often in the city of Lawrence. And 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 not be able to promote renters insurance is something that I think we're missing, or at least we should be taking this approach, knowing the fact that if we promote this and and one of the victims in the future take advantage of it, this is one less family that we need to potentially have to assist. And it's not because we don't want it, it's because we want them, we want to make sure that they are better off because the city have limited amount of funds. 122,000 is not going to take us too long. So just taking, taking that as a suggestion and please bring it up to the team and see if they can incorporate those discussions into the, into the expenditures.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I had Council Marmo next.
Um, I just want to piggyback off of our Council President, and you're going to probably say this is not under your purview, but considering that what these funds are going to be used for, it's for fire victims, I'm just trying to gain an understanding, is it for the most recent fire victims or is this like, so, you know, any, any fire victims prior to the most recent one that we had on Lowell Street? I don't know if we had any victims from, was it Medford? I don't know if there was anyone displaced, but I'll give you an example. After Lowell Street Fire, there was one on Medford Street.
You said Medford and I thought city. I'm like, what?
No, 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 no. Medford Street.
I'm following you now. I'm following you now.
Close to Winter Street and that's it, sure. So I say all of this to say, I'm curious, to what degree is the city keeping track of these of these fire victims? During most, my most recent community outreach, I came across with a family that was a victim of being displaced from Lowell Street, and they are residing with a family friend on Morton. And they are only there, I think, for the next, they're only allowed to be there for the next week or so. So they're considered homeless. They're feeling as if nothing has been done. They earn too much income to even qualify for home base, to qualify for the full allotment of food stamps. So I'm just curious as to like, again, I'm not, I know this is probably not under your jurisdiction, but considering what these funds are going to be used for, I'm trying to see if you're able to provide that data for us in the next upcoming meeting.
Yes, and I, I, I will, I will, I will apologize for Milagro Gruyon because she was supposed to be here with us tonight. And she's the, she's the new Homelessness Initiative Coordinator and would probably be able to answer some of those questions for you.
Who's that?
Milagro Gruyon.
Who's, who's the homeless coordinator?
Um, so.
Who's the homeless coordinator again?
Milagro Gruyon.
Is it the Milagros? I think it is. I don't know who that is. She sent an email. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, yeah, so I will, I will go back to her to see if she, if she'd be able to answer the questions that you you asked.
Why isn't she here tonight? Because this is an important.
I am not sure. I communicated with both her and Minerva this morning. So I, I, if she sent me an email, I didn't see it because I've been out for most of the afternoon doing outreach and some other work on the roadside.
Not to cut you off, I really, to me, it's important to know who is it that I should direct these questions to because I have that family's name, phone number, and I want to be able to delegate these issues to the appropriate party. I thought Charlene, that was still the, not, not Charlene, okay.
So I will, I can, I will, I will send an email and introduce you to her.
So she actually, she sent us an email.
Okay.
However, it is important for her to show up in person when it comes to matters of homelessness and displacement so we can see who it is in person as well. You're being asked questions that you don't know the answers to, that we should have our homeless coordinator here for. And can you please relay that message?
Yes.
Thank you.
So any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, so we don't have the homeless coordinator here, so, and I have questions for her. Can we table this item?
Can I have a motion to table item 361-25?
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before the second ring?
Sure. No, there's no discussion, there's no discussion on table matters.
How detrimental is it by tabling this matter? Because I, I will support my colleagues because we do have questions, but I also want to hear from you as to how detrimental it is. Will it cause a delay or a setback?
I don't, I did, I do not think so.
Second.
All right, so can I, so there's a motion to table this. It's been properly seconded. All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The second, Council Luzon made, made the motion. Council Marmo seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. You have another item, item 362-25, authorization to expend 139,805 grant funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health awarded to the Mayor's Health Task Force/Laurence Mass in Motion for Active Transportation: Safe Routes to School, to School and Parks in Open Spaces. Alicia, can you please explain? That's a mouthful.
That is a mouthful. So Lawrence is one of 10 communities across the Commonwealth that are, that are part of the Mass in Motion Syndicate under, under DPH. We are funded to look broadly at issues related to healthy eating and active living. In the city of Lawrence, we are looking specifically at at physical activity and the physical environment because we we can make that determination. And so for us, our strategies are active transportation, looking at the Shawshin Road and River Trail as calm corridors leading to public infrastructures such as the three schools along the way, the Breen School, the the South Lawrence East Middle and Elementary School, and the Lawrence High Schools. It's also connected and and on the way to the Shawshin Park, which houses a few baseball fields and a soccer field. It's adjacent to the DCR pool, swimming pool. It, it, it's, it has a connection to the Kane Soccer Field and to the Sullivan Courts and the Veterans Memorial Stadium. So it's, they're really two very important corridors that needs, need a lot of love. And so we have undertaken to look at those corridors with the community and with other members of of our, of our partnership to see what folks think about improvements, what would they like to see, and and what are some of the things that we can do to to support that? So we, last year, we did outreach with the community and we got feedback. We did some walks along both the trail and the road and continued to to have conversation with the community. We worked at, we, we, we did some work in conjunction with Groundwork Lawrence at the, at the Costello Farm. And so we're, we've, we're putting together a report with recommendations for improvements that will be shared with you all at at some point when it's completed.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments?
To your manager.
Council President.
Thank you, Alicia, for providing that information. We have a long discussion about that yesterday and I appreciate it. We have similar, similar loan, similar loan here on the Lower Tower Hill that you guys are going to be using for this area, right?
That's under the REACH project.
Yeah.
So the active strat, the Mass in Motion covers the south and we, we do partner with the Partham School and we are, we're, we're also partnering with Arlington for fiscal year 2026, which is this current year.
Thank you.
So active transportation is one strategy that we have. School policy, more, more specifically, safe routes to school is the other strategy that we're looking at. And for that, we're looking to increase walker, walkership and riding to school and have been working closely with the Partham and the Frost School in that last year, we were able to do two of the three flagship days with, at the Frost. the Frost School and one at the Partham, the second one got snowed out. Um, but what we're looking to do is to, most kids, seventy-five percent of kids live within a quarter-mile radius of school, so they can walk, and so, we're walking, working with parents, working with school administration, looking at ways to get kiddos out and walking. Um, we know that, we know that there, uh, there are mental health and physical health benefits to doing that, it's, it, it really, um, supports, uh, uh, social cohesion among students, um, and so, it, it's a benefit for, for everyone. Uh, there's, there doesn't have to be traffic, a traffic, a traffic, um, congestion around schools during arrival and dismissal. So that's the one, that's a second strategy, and the third strategy is really around, um, building up inclusive and equitable parks, looking particularly at the permitting system, uh, and making sure that there are things in place for all users of the park. So regardless of your, your ability, if you want to go to the park, you should be able to use it as a resident of this, of the city, and so, we've been doing that. Um, we're working with the Rec Department and, and with DPW to do some of this work, um, and, uh, they, they were able to do a lot of work in, at the Howard Park, um, in FY twenty-five, that just ended, uh, and now we're working with the Arlington School, because we know, uh, teacher Maggie Reedy and some of the others, they do take the schools from the Arlington, the students, sorry, from the Arlington to the, the Howard Park for extracurricular activities. And so, this year, we're gonna be looking at using the, um, the safe, safe routes to parks, um, framework to look at, uh, two of our corridors that they use to get to the Howard Park, to see how, what improvements can be made on those corridors, and we'll also be, um, installing, uh, a, hopefully a pedestrian crossing and pedestrian signs, um, that alert, uh, vehi, vehicle owners to the fact that kids are, people might be crossing here, so pay attention, slow down when you're, when you're going along Lawrence Street. So that's some of what we're looking to do this year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? See, Counsel Marmo.
Is this just for Howard Park, or what other parks in the city is going to benefit from this award?
Um, so, that, that was just one example, um, they are, they have been working with all the parks, um, they've been working with park users, uh, I know they've been working closely with the leagues, um, and with some of the events folks, they've done some revamping of permits, uh, they, they've, they've implemented a system with, with, with you guys, I, I believe, around how permits, the flow of permitting, um, some, there are some documents that they have, uh, either created or revised, uh, so I know that there is work that has happened. They did some work with, um, the autism group and had partnered with the Lawrence Police Department last year to have an Autism Awareness Day event. So we'll continue to work with, um, particularly, uh, we've talked about working with the CPAC from the Lawrence Public School, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Alphabet soup. So, um, uh, so we'll continue to work with, with the, the leagues and other folks that use the park, making sure that everybody has a chance to use the park. Um, so we know the popular parks are, are very well-used, if you drive by the South Common in the, especially during the summertime, it's a buzz, uh, and that's what we wanna see, we wanna see people coming out and using our public spaces, because we know there are a lot of us in the city, and there's not a lot of open spaces in, at home. So where there are open spaces, we wanna create those environments that make it such that everybody can use them.
Thank you. All right, Counselor, at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, uh, motion to send to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion has been made by Counsel Marmo, is her second.
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. All discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
We will see you next week.
Thank you.
All right, the next item and the last item is item, well, under new business at least, item three sixty-three dash twenty-five, authorization to expend ninety-five thousand, ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty cents from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Fund, brought to us by our DPW Director, Director Jorge Heimann.
Yeah, good evening, Counselors, Jorge Heimann, Public Works Director, Two Hundred Common Street. So I'm here to request authorization to expand ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, um, of the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust Funds. So the DPW intends to use these funds to continue, um, doing pavement markings around downtown areas and, uh, our main roads, so I'm looking for your consideration.
This is probably just for pavings, to finish the pa, the street markings, I mean...
Markings, yes.
The street markings, okay. Counselors, any questions or comments? Council President.
Um, this is the, uh, chair right? Uh, this is the, uh, the funds that we receive every year because of the chair, right?
Yes, correct. So we're receiving these funds every year, so...
So usually, I, I have seen, uh, for the last two years, we have spent these funds for the downtown. Uh, I believe that the first year was a hundred twenty-something, and then another hundred and something, and this year is about a hundred thousand. So can we expand those expenditures to, uh, potentially, uh, all the locations, because I know that we prioritize, uh, the, uh, the school, around, around the school areas, and we also prioritize, uh, the downtown area. But sometime, we don't have, uh, pavement markings around local roads, perhaps other locations, because every year, we have those two main priorities, and I'm glad that we're getting these funds, trust me, but I just wanna make sure, like, at least, we consider a portion of it to do, uh, pavement marking, at least on the, on a temporary side, or in a temporary way, uh, to do, uh, markings around local roads.
Yeah, we're doing that, so we recently paved M Street, we had to go back and paint it, so, and, and Haber Two by the, next to Metto Line, so over there, so we, we're using those funds all over the city. So we also have a project that we had to discuss with, um, uh, the BP, Madam Chair, Stephanie Fandy, Montburne, so that we, that these funds are gonna be utilized to, to provide some, uh, uh, painting on, on Montburne Street, but that's something that we need to discuss, because we need to create an ordinance before moving on, on this project, but, but again, so we, we use these funds all over the city.
Because I just saying, because you just mentioned that it was gonna be used for the downtown, so that's why...
That, that's correct, to finish downtown, so, but these funds are also used in front of the schools, or we have new schools that we need to go and continue to, to providing them with the crosswalks and all of that, just to create safety around, around...
So essentially, uh, uh, these funds are gonna be used for many locations, perfect.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, um, we, can we use chapter ninety funds to be able to, uh, do pavement marking, other than new pave?
Yes, we can, we can do, yes, if we do the, if we request the project with the stay, and it gets approved, yes, we can use those funds.
Okay. So I'm just trying to identify different sources of funds, so we can expand, uh, potentially, more markings around the city, and I know that we do, we do markings around the city in, uh, downtown, school areas, uh, and major roads, specifically the Double Yellow Center Line, but I'm wondering about the local road that, you know, kinda like we painted once, but kinda like, you know, uh, the priorities are not quite there, so I was wondering...
You will see that very soon, so we're working on that, so, we, we need these funds to continue doing that, we have a vendor in place, they're just waiting for us to, to give them the go-ahead, and, and you will see a lot done this, uh, season.
So we'll see more local roads that haven't been painted for a while?
Absolutely.
All right, no problem, thank you.
Director, I've been receiving complaints from, or concerns from middle school students, actually, pertaining to crosswalk paintings. I can tell you in District E, around the two schools, on, I think the weather, we've been working on it slowly, but at least around the Frost, those crosswalks are in horrible paint condition. I believe, and I'm gonna continue saying this, we've been prioritizing a lot in North Lawrence, and I don't believe the projects or the efforts have been as balanced. Uh, I know you help as much as you can, when you can, and I'm gonna give you the credit for that, but I, I do wanna see a little bit more, I think, um, where...
Yeah, when you receive those type of complaints, or bring, bring those complaints to me, Director, please, so...
I'm gonna give you the list, yeah.
I'll, you know that I'll go and take care of them.
Thank you. You have your question, too? Counsel Marmo?
I have a question in regards to, uh, what is the process, like, if you could walk me through, how do you choose the company that does these markings?
We go out of bid, and...
Through an RFP?
Yes.
Okay. There, and the reason why I ask is because, oh, despite that I know the efforts that the city's making to beautify the city, and it, it, it's noticeable, however, I do notice when I walk in downtown, the markings are a little sloppy, so I'm just wondering if that's something that you guys, do you guys notice that? Is that something normal?
That's temporary, so that's just the, uh...
Oh, okay, 'cause some of it is like real sloppy, I don't know, like, uh, I was just trying to say, like, if that's our lowest RFP offer, and that's the...
It's not the final word, it's just the setup. So they, they do, yeah, and they do it like the night before and a couple of nights after, they just go and do the real painting, so, those, you see a lot of tapes, it's no real paint.
Oh. More to come, which is why he's in front of us this evening.
And it's a learning process for me to understand, um, how...
I'm happy to answer it.
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll now entertain a motion.
Make a motion to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion has been made by the Council President, seconded by Counsel Luzon, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, can I have, I don't see anyone from the Police Department, can I have a motion to table items three sixty-four dash twenty-five and three sixty-five dash twenty-five pertaining to police grants and, um, prior year bills?
Motion to table.
Second. Motion has been made by Counsel Marmo, seconded by Counsel Luzon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, now moving back to, can I have a motion to untable item one sixty-nine twenty-five, our annual audit report?
Motion to untable.
Second. Motion has been made, properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you very much. Uh, this, this final report will be relatively quick.
I just don't know that, this, sorry to interrupt you, but the first part was, was, it was a lot of information I saw, including myself, we were taking notes, I also wanted to give the Counselors some time to either digest or...
Absolutely, before we go to the final reporter, are there any other questions that we would like to address?
Madam Chair. Counsel Marmo?
Um, I'm gonna go back a little bit to what my colleague was mentioning, the long-term debt, so, I, I'm reading that, that currently the city has two-point-two-eight million in authorized and unissued long-term debt. Based on your experience and expertise in auditing, um, other similar cities and towns with our, you know, similar demographic and, and expenses and revenues, would you say that we fall in line with that debt? Is it sustainable, um, or is that something that we should be alerted in terms of how to manage?
You know, I, as clients, I have a lot of larger cities throughout the Commonwealth, and, um, I would suggest that your, the level of existing debt and your authorized for future programs or future projects are, are pretty much in line with what we see with cities the size of, of Lawrence. Uh, again, not every project that, that you all have voted to approve and authorize bonding for may come to fruition, sometimes, things may be tabled, for whatever reason that might be, um, but, but frankly, uh, I would suggest, um, I've seen a lot more debt, and I've seen you, you're probably somewhere right, right in the middle, maybe a, a little over middle compared to most cities this size within the, uh, Commonwealth, uh, but again, it's not, and if we looked quickly at the budget, the general fund budget, which is on page seventy-nine of the financials, we see that your principal is only about eight-point-three million, interest is six-point-nine, six-point-five, excuse me, in the year, so is that fourteen, we'll call it just easy math, fifteen million dollars a year for principal and interest on your long-term debt. Your total appropriation budget, not even including transfers out, we're talking four-hundred-and-seventy million dollars or so roughly, so, you know, you're talking six percent maybe of your budget is going to debt service. Typically, we'll see in the range of somewhere between four and ten, the rating agencies like to see ten below realistically, so right now, currently based on what I'm seeing, at roughly what we'll call, do quick math, at about six percent, I'd say you're, you're doing quite fine for, for your budget level, absolutely.
My last question is, um, is there anything within this audit that you made a determination that we should improve on?
Well, you know, the, this audit actually went very smoothly, um, again, as I mentioned, information was provided, we didn't end up with material weakness or significant deficiencies, what that means is, all the areas that we looked at to see if reconciliations are occurring, if the departments are communicating with each other, if, uh, the policies and procedures of the city are being followed by various departments, before any dollars are spent are being followed, they are, uh, we did not uncover, uh, anything material that we, we feel we need to bring to the Council's attention during Fiscal Twenty-four at all, we thought it, it went, uh, very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also, Ms. Chair. Counsel President?
Just a follow-up question to that, our operating budget for the city of Lawrence, the general fund, it's about a hundred million dollars, so we cannot include on that four-hundred-and-seventy, as you mentioned, uh, the chapter seventy fund, which is basically the vacation fund, so it's completely different, so I mean, we, if we look at the fifty million dollars debt service that we have, that's about fifteen percent.
If you remove the schools, I, I, I'll, I'll agree with you there, and so, and if, if we look at it in that light, yes, it's creeping over the ten percent, and it might be something that, that, you know, a, as the, the Counselors, you may want to start to think about, look at what projects are, are very necessary, and, you know, kinda prioritize, you know, what, what you need to do for the city, uh, the city's infrastructure, the city's assets, that type of thing, to keep them, uh, in good condition, we just heard of the roads and, and so on and so forth, it's all very important things to, you know, to maintain and keep going, we all know that, that it, it's not a cheap process, but I do agree with you, if we remove the schools and such, uh, you're at about the fifteen percent range, um, and then if we looked at it in that light, you're starting to creep up a little bit on, on the high side, so I would, uh, look to, and if we, if I just quickly looked at one thing in your notes, the debt, just wanna double-check one thing, like your general, so you, you know, we're in, what, uh, twenty-five, you know, you have about twenty-five years left on a lot of your bonds, so it's, it's not gonna diminish anytime soon realistically, so I, I think now the proactive side is to be selective on what projects, uh, you allow bonding to occur on, and, um, maybe some of the smaller projects that maybe the city is able to appropriate some available monies and not bond for, uh, and/or the treasurer can always be looking at, uh, some of these older bonds, depending on when the interest rates start changing, they may be able to refinance some of those bonds and save some, uh, principal and or interest, uh, on those particular bonds as well, which will help to decrease that percentage each year.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, that's not happening with the current market.
No, it's not happening with the current market, I'll give you that, uh, but, you know, it, it, it will come back, uh, we, as auditors, we, how do I say this, in, in a funny way?
You've been very positive.
Excuse me?
You've been very positive.
The, a, as auditors, we see the cycle, right, of, of interest rates, and when the interest rates are low, we have clients that are refinancing all day long, and as they're high, as you're mentioning, uh, it's not the best market conditions to go out and do uh, it's not the best market conditions to go out and do that. So, yes, I agree that that's kinda where we are right now. Um, it, ha, part of having a CIP plan is, is prioritizing the projects that the city really needs to uh, put forth and, and hopefully be able to fund, and at the same time, part of that is, is having your treasury function also be reviewing what you do have for current issued bonds, whether it be general or, uh, water sewer, although the water sewer fund is really designed to kinda pay for their own. Um, but, yes, you'd wanna continue to pay attention to the markets and the rates and what's out there. Um, uh, strong financial reporting, good results within your financials, no material or significant deficiencies allows the city to maintain and increase your bond rating, which also helps to, um, gain a better interest rate and that type of thing when you do go to market. So, it's, it's sort of not a, just a one answer, fits all, if I may. There are a number of attributes that can go into helping that fifteen percent be reduced, and, um, again, yes, pulling out the schools, I, I would suggest it is probably, uh, a prudent exercise to approve projects in a, in a manner of which you're prioritizing what really needs to be done first, type of thing. Absolutely.
Because of our, our level of, uh, debt service that we have currently, that's why we have not, uh, had a formal CIP, and we are merely going on the Pago Capital, which is budgeted every year per statute. So, we haven't had, we haven't come before you, uh, the council, to ask for any borrowings because of the high debt that we have for the, uh, the two new schools and the, and the police station.
And the reason why is because, um, the two councilors that just asked questions are both correlated directly. Council Luzon was talking about the free cash, and the free cash is correlated to the debt service because we direct twenty million dollars to be able to cover the extra debt service that we're gonna have for the next few years until we actually get out of, uh, out of a few loans, which I can see here that in two thousand twenty-five, one of those loans are gonna be ending. Uh, and then the other one is gonna be in two thousand twenty-seven, and then after that, we're gonna be at the same level that we are today, but without the financing or the extra money that we put in, uh, due to the free cash that we just, we just, uh, appropriate to those specific debt service, uh, debt services that we have. So essentially, the next bond that we have that is gonna, or the next one that is gonna be ending, looking at this page fifty-two, is gonna be in fourteen years from now. So, the city of Lawrence will have a tough time when it comes to finance any type of project for the next fourteen years. So, looking at this audit, in that, not, not having that as a, as a, as a concern or findings, uh, it's, it's like, it should be as, as one of the findings, uh, to be able to, for us to look into it. So, and that's, that's not, it's not there, uh, as clear as we, as we're discussing.
I understand where you're coming from. I think sometimes in, as an audit firm, uh, we have not always, uh, as you mentioned, the school side of it, uh, a lot of times we will look at the gross budget and/or the percentage thereof, but your point, I think, was very valid in knowing that there are revenue streams that are directed directly to your educational processes, and those should be called out, and look at the net, so I would have to agree with you on that. And, um, uh, looking at the dates, I do see, as you're referring, that there'll be some falling off, but then, yes, you do have, I mean, one of your most recent bonds goes out to twenty fifty-two with about a hundred and fourteen million dollars remaining. Um, so it, it will be, it will be an important budgetary item for the city to be thinking about your debt service going forward, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure, like, we, at least we put that in as, as one of the findings. Uh, as a, as a, uh, just something to look at and people to be aware of. Because, uh, as a city, it's gonna be difficult for us not to be able to have a, a, not an appropriation fund, but a debt, uh, as a, a bond authorization for, uh, infrastructures in the next fourteen years. And that's something that we're not gonna be able to afford with the debt service. The, the level of debt service we have, which is fifteen million, about every year. So, so that's, that's something that we need to look at, and that's something that should be reflected on the audit as a finding.
When you say as a finding, um, uh, uh, are you referring, I mean, I, I wouldn't call it, um, a significant deficiency that would, that, but it, it would, I think it is a point of, of interest, absolutely very important to discuss. Um, and by all means, I'd be more than happy to, to, to meet with you all, you know, if you had a meeting that you wanted to simply discuss debt and budgets and CIP and that type of thing, and throw ideas around, um, and, and see where we land and how we can help assist yourselves in the city of Lawrence. Um, maybe find a way to pay down some of this debt, find ways that you may be able to increase revenues that help to offset that, that type of thing. Um, I'd be, you know, more than happy to, to be involved in something like that and, and assist.
No, essentially, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is like, you know, it's, it's, it's not a deficiency. It's our reality. Uh, but it's a, it's a situation that we need to look at. And knowing the fact that, you know, and I'm gonna keep on going on, on the same direction, knowing the fact that we're not gonna be able to afford any other, any potential other project in the future, something that we need to look into it and have it as potential finding of that, uh, of the audit. And not necessarily as a deficiency, but something that we need to look at and be aware of the potential, uh, of the potential perhaps issue.
Issue.
Uh, that, that might bring, and then having that as one of the findings on the audits will get, get us aware of the current financial situation that we're going through. Because currently, it's fine. We'll be able to afford whatever we have, but for the next fourteen years, uh, it's something that we're not gonna be able to afford any, uh, anything else. And then essentially, it is important to, um, potentially have some type of, uh, out of those findings, potentially, potentially have, uh, potentially have some type of good practice, um, suggestions on there as of how we potentially might be able to address any of those potential issues that we might have in the future. And I know that, you know, it might not be within the judicial session of the audit, uh, but it is important to have this conversation open, knowing the fact that, you know, i- it is a situation that we might face in the future. And if we don't address it now as a, as a potential issue, and then it might, it might come back to us in the, in the ten years from now, or five years from now, and, and those are good things to be able to kinda like track down. Since we know that it is happening, we have the two new schools, we have the police department, but we have a debt service that we need, we, we increase, and we actually, uh, financing at this point with free cash, uh, under, under, thanks to the ALPA funds. So, those are things that we need to maintain, mentioning it here or somewhere. Uh, and that way we, we understand, like, you know, this is the true situation that we, that we're in.
I think that we could easily, uh, as in a, uh, not an addendum, but, uh, rather than a full, uh, what we'll call, uh, management letter, we could put a letter together, um, uh, to the city uh, discussing the debt issue and making some recommendations there. That would not be a problem at all. I'd be happy to do that.
Caffel to add to your list of tasks. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we are ready to proceed with the next report.
Okay. The next report is, is a pretty quick one. It's what we call the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Again, all that does is, uh, report the federal dollars, whether it's, it's city, school, police, fire, what have you, any federal dollars that the city received. Uh, as of fiscal June thirtieth, fiscal twenty-four, the city expended approximately seventy million dollars worth of federal funds. Uh, we've noted that, uh, as we've sort of discussed, the various COVID-related grants are starting to uh, be spent down. Uh, so, Education Stabilization Fund and ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, were two of the largest spent, uh, during fiscal twenty-four. Um, we, as auditors, have to go through a process to determine which grants we do look at, and this year, we had to look at the WEA cluster, the Workforce in, uh, Innovation and Opportunity Act cluster, as well as the Education Stabilization Fund. Uh, the federal government gives out certain guidelines that we have to audit by to assure that the city is handling those funds properly. I'm happy to say that, uh, there were no findings or question costs in going through those programs, and on this report, the city received an unmodified opinion as well, which, again, is the best that you can get. And realistically, for that particular report, in a nutshell, that's all, all it does is report the federal expenditures. And it's a clean report. It, it would be, without findings, what the city would be looking for.
Councilors, any questions or comments?
I have a quick question.
Oh, you have, Council President?
So, just to, to make sure that, uh, that we mentioned this, is no finding on this, on this report?
Correct.
Okay. So, in overall, and in previous year, we have, uh, no, typically no finding on, on the federal grants and the federal funds.
That is correct.
This is not an exception.
That is one of.
This is not an, an, an exception, so.
No, it is not an exception. Uh, uh, based on my review of the number of years of the city's federal report, uh, there have been no findings or question costs, which means that each year, the grants that we have to look at and scrutinize based on federal regulations will change. However, having no findings or question costs each year states that your, uh, grant administrators and such are handling the funds in accordance with the federal guidelines properly.
So, the reason why I'm asking is because I wanna make sure, like, we at least, uh, have this question being asked, so we are, we have no issues whatsoever with this type of, this type of.
Not with the federal funds at all. Those are there. Everything that we looked at was above board, properly, um, uh, excuse me, uh, supported by documentation, uh, followed all the compliance requirements that were required to follow, uh, from the federal government, and, uh, we had no discrepancies noted whatsoever in the grants that we had to audit.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I believe that concludes our audit report. I'm looking at the Caffel. Do you have anything else to add before? Okay. That concludes our fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit report. Thank you for the work. Lot of numbers, a lot of time that goes into this. I appreciate the work, um, that you guys put in. Oh, I spoke to, so, Council President?
Thank you. For the full council, uh, I wanna kinda like, I'll change a little bit the format. So, if you can bring a presentation to expedite the time, because we cannot spend an hour and a half of the full council level. So, maybe, uh, a, a proper presentation that you can go over line by line, or, or whatever you guys feel like is acceptable, but I mean, shorter period of time.
We could certainly, uh.
Because I mean, uh.
We could certainly shorten the amount of time, absolutely.
Yeah, because.
This was my first time with you all, so I kinda was given a little bit of extra info.
No, no, no.
And this is, this is the committee to do it. This, this is what these committees are for, yeah.
This is what the committees are for, so we can go over everything in details, but at the full council, we provide, uh, a summary of what we have discussed at this level. If anybody wanted to look at the meeting, they can come over to take a look at these meetings, and then we have a full detail, uh, and, and detail-oriented meetings around the issue, but at the full council, maybe a, a summary of what we have discussed. And a proper presentation, it may be better, because it's quicker, it's smoother.
We'll definitely, definitely make note of that.
Council Luzon?
Thank you, Melas, for the Caffel. The website? So, on the website, um, they should be able to find all the reports, the, the approved budget, all the audit reports. We upload them. Yes.
But, okay, so for the full council meeting, Council President, your task as a president, make sure everyone has these, these, these packets. Um, if anyone does have questions that are, I guess, more in, in the, in the details, they'll ask, they'll definitely review this prior. And I, I know for the Caffel to make sure that at the full council, we have the presentation ahead of time so that they can, uh, project it on the screens. And I think that's it, so.
Just make Caffel three minutes. Could, do you mind sending, sending a copy to the full council, uh, digital?
We have, I, I have them. I can forward it to you.
Yeah, please.
Yep, yes, I have them. All right. Can I have a motion to send this up to the full council as a committee report?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
We will see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
All right, now at this point, can I have a motion to adjourn? Probably seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you so much, councilors.